I want to welcome you to the July 14 regular study session for our meeting, our regular meeting of the governing board. We are going to be getting an update from Mrs. Lana Berry concerning the ESER III funding. Mrs. Berry?
All right. President Mazdin, members of the board, good evening. So tonight, we are going to talk a little bit about the federal stimulus funding and specifically talk about ESER III because our community is going to be involved in the process with ESER III, and we wanted to explain the starting point of where we're at and how we will get our community involved in the next step. So tonight, I wanted to share a little bit of a background for people who are listening and just to review with the board the information that we have talked about for the last couple of months and then actually over the COVID period, which has been since March of 2020. So a few things that I'm going to cover tonight that I think are important is, one, we're going to review ADM loss because that's important to understand where some of our ESER funding from ESER I, ESER II, and our enrollment stability grant went, and then where we're going with ESER III. We're going to talk about what we have spent those dollars with related to ESER I, ESER II, and some of the plans and priorities that will be happening with ESER III. And so with that, I will be turning it over to Mr. Narducci towards the end of the presentation to talk to you about the priorities that have been thought about throughout our district and that we'll be bringing to our community to give some impact or some input on in August, starting in August. And then we'll discuss those timeframes and what the next step looks like. So right off the bat, just to understand a little bit about what was happening last year.
Mrs. Berry, can you pause for just a minute?
Sure.
We are having a little bit of trouble hearing, Mrs. Berry. I don't know if we can increase the gain on the microphone or if she just needs to...
Let me see. Can I take it off? Does that sound better? No? Yes? Can you hear better?
A little bit.
Do you think I'm... Is there anything I can do differently?
No. I don't... I don't know. I don't know. So that's not...
Okay. I will try to talk loud. Does that help?
That would be great. Thank you.
And hopefully, the people online can hear, but I will try to speak loud so that everybody up at the dais can hear.
I'm fine.
Okay. Great. All right. So on average daily membership, just a little bit of information. Our school district is obviously funded based on the number of students who come to our school from day one through day 100. If you come for the full time, you get 100% funding. If you come after day 100, like on 101, and stay the rest of the year, we don't get any funding for that. If you come on day 50 and are here for the rest of the year, we get 50% funding. But for our students last year and across the nation, this wasn't unique across the nation or the state, we did reduce our enrollment and our average daily membership. We were projecting to increase slightly, and so we had proposed a budget last year when we originally came together in June of 2020, just a few months after the pandemic happened, thinking we would grow a few hundred students, when actually what happened, as we all know, is we decreased students during that time period. Same thing happened across our state for the average, the most of the majority of the school districts and across our nation. We are hoping we will be presenting to you the applied economics. Our outside demographer has put together some demography estimations of where we'll go in the next few years, and we'll be bringing that back to the board, and we do believe we'll hopefully grow this year. But this budget this year, we have based on the ADM from last year, even though we're on current year funding, because we didn't know exactly what's going to happen and if our students were to return or not. When we revise the budget and the ADM does increase, we will bring that back to you. So just at this point, we are still budgeting at pretty much where we ended last year. We didn't take a reduction in that. We do believe we're going to grow, but we wanted to be conservative until we know, since we're based on current year funding. But I bring this slide up because it's important because we used our federal dollars to help us recover from the loss of ADM since it is related to current year funding. So a couple of things that happened last year, just as a recap from last year, when we revised our budget because we had lost students in our district due to either staying home, homeschooling, going to a different district, going to a competitor or like a charter school or a private school, or just not able to even determine where they were at because we could not locate them at another school, which was a significant portion of our students. That was 14, almost $14 million. We had to reduce our budget last year by that. We also revised at the very end because we lost a small amount of another 277 students by the end of last year. So that total was almost $15 million. We weren't ready for that. Neither were very many school districts in the entire state. We were just fortunate enough that we have been a great fiscal position to where we could cover those issues when they took place. We didn't know if all the federal money was going to come in and at what levels and amounts when we began the fiscal year, and so we used some of our contingencies to begin the year, knowing that potentially we would have reserves to cover that from our own district funds or there'd be federal funds, and we were fortunate to receive federal dollars that backfilled some of these issues.
How much reserves did we use?
We were able to... We didn't have to use any of our reserves. So we were able to use all of the federal money, federal, which is ESER I, ESER II, and the enrollment stability grant to cover and our bond dollars. So we were able to use all four pockets of funds and we didn't have to end up dipping into any of our reserves, which was fantastic. Now, at the very beginning of the year, we did... The only thing we had was ESER I. So back in July and even till December, we only had $3 million from ESER I. That was the only amount of money we had. And then the enrollment stability grant came in, and then ESER II came in. But in the very beginning, we were using our dollars at that point to make payroll, to purchase things, and we used bond dollars to buy capital equipment, computers and things like that. We also had the adjustment for last year because we had... We didn't open school at the very beginning, and originally, that reduction for distance learning at 95% was calculated at 12 million. But because Chandler decided to open and we opened 71% of the time, that reduction only went down to $4 million. So that was something that was great for us, is that we recaptured $8 million where other school districts in the state had that full loss for distance learning because they weren't open until ultimately the requirement was made in the last quarter of the year. So we were fortunate. We gained $8 million back by being open, and that was a good thing for our district. So a couple of things, just to make you understand the timeline of last year, when we opened the school year, we had about $18 million worth of new expenses between adding teachers and staff to accommodate, to meet the mitigation plans, for capital expenditures, for personal protective equipment, and thank goodness, we did have reserves to cover that. We were able then to journal entry those into the federal dollars, so we didn't have to spend our local dollars at the very end of the fiscal year, but we were very fortunate that we had that in case the federal dollars had not came in. So what happened? The CARES Act was initiated for March 27, 2020. That was originally ESER I was part of that, if you remember that piece, and we decided to buy computers from that. The CRRSA, which is the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriation Act, happened in December of '27, and then on March 11, the American Rescue Plan came in place. Yes, Joel?
I, of anybody, shouldn't be confused, but I am. Can we go back a couple? So that 14 million, what's the difference between that screen and the next screen?
So this was just ADM, actual students that we lost, and the next screen was talking, was explaining the distance learning portion. So a student is worth 100%, but unfortunately, we had a calculation where that reduced us by 5% the distance learning adjustment. Part of it started because the governor did not allow us to start in person.
So do you have to add the two screens together to get the loss?
We did. Yes, together. Yes. And at the end, it was only $4 million, and this year, we don't have a distance learning adjustment because we're going to be starting in person. So we'll get 100% funding for those students.
Good.
All right. So a little bit about background for what the enrollment stability grant, called ESG, and the elementary and secondary school emergency relief grant, called ESER, what we have done with that. So the enrollment stability grant was given through the federal dollars to the governor, and he ultimately utilized $360 million to help us across the state with our enrollment because majority of the entire state was reduced in ADM. I think there was lacking 50,000 students they could not account for in the state. That was actually equivalent to $600 million, but he did have $360 million, and so we got about 60% of our loss in ADM reimbursed through the enrollment stability grant. So for us, it wasn't the full amount, but it was a portion of what that was going to be. So we used that money to backfill those ADM losses that we had, a portion of it. The elementary and secondary school emergency relief is a grant that's provided to school districts with emergency relief funds to address the impact of COVID-19 on elementary and secondary schools. So the very first ESER that we spent was to try in the very beginning was so that our teachers could teach from home because we had a requirement to be at home. We couldn't be here in person, and we needed teachers and staff to have computers and access at home. And then after that, we used those dollars to help us pay for online teachers, to pay for personal protective equipment, and all of those things that we used to help us support us for the whole fiscal year. These were the allowable usage. So we were allowed in ESER I and ESER II, as long as we were within the allowable uses that the federal government stated. We could spend dollars regarding loss of learning, assessing and monitoring student needs, activities to engage students, information and assistance to families, facility improvements, resources to principals and leaders, and then focused on students most impacted by the pandemic and staff and supply. So that pretty much encompassed everything we do here to support our students during COVID, and all of our funds, we feel met all of those, met those criteria, met that criteria. So what was the timeline for all of this? We were able to... The first enrollment stability grant that was to help us address the issues related to our reduction in average daily membership actually had to be spent and finalized by December 30 of 2020. So there was a lot of criteria because the money came in through the governor and had to be spent during that period of time. So for us, we had to have an application and approved, and then all of that had to be spent by December 30. The ESER I dollars had to be spent by September 30 of 2022. We actually spent those before we spent the enrollment stability grant because we purchased in our district the computers during the first few months, and they became available also in the summer before the school year even began last year. And then ESER II, it has its $13.5 million. Its end date is September of '23, but when you see the annual financial report this year, you'll see that we have spent all of ESER II, and so we have backfilled to help address and to cover the expenses we did incur for the COVID mitigation plan that we put in place last year. So we were able to journal entry all of those expenditures into ESER III. So what we have left is ESER III. It's the only amount of federal money that will be left, and we have all of that amount, the $30 million, $30.6 million, and we will begin the process of identifying the priorities, and then we will have our community's input that will help us align with what we're going to spend that on. And we have all the way until September 30 of 2024 to spend that. So ESG, ESER I, and ESER II have already been spent, and that really was to cover all the expenditures and to help us offset the loss of ADM and the distance learning cut that we took on last year. How did we spend that? So I pretty much touched on this, but the enrollment stability grant kind of stabilized it. What do we actually do? We journal entered salaries and benefits from different areas into that and also from different departments. We, for ESER I, we purchased technology equipment along with our bond. Our bond did another $6 million worth of expenditures along with ESER, around $3 million. We spent almost $10 million. And then ESER II mitigation salaries, we again journal entered salaries. All of our online staff, we moved all of them into ESER II, and then we paid for summer school and some professional development that we took on, plus smaller expenditures like personal protective equipment and some things like that. Yes?
Sorry. What kind of professional development did we pay for with the ESER II?
Sure. That's a great question, Mrs. Love. So Mrs. Nance, or Dr. Nance and Abby Druck put on a number of professional development classes for our staff so they could be able to teach their kids virtually. That was at the very beginning. We did a lot of staff trainees before the school year even began, and it was very focused on how do we provide services to our students virtually and then in person. Wendy, would you like to add to that?
Yeah. It wasn't limited to just teachers. We also had our paraprofessionals that were suddenly having to go online into that learning environment, so we had access to the Google Classroom. We had some confidentiality. We had some training on how to be creative in there, how to use our Buzz to access the PD for best practices, and then accessing their online curriculum as well. Those were our major ones that we did, and we had well over, I think it was $1.3 million in professional development training, and our staff participated 100%.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So the enrollment stability grant, $14 million, those are the specific things that they were used for, our Chandler Online, community education. We journal entry some of our food service that happened in March of 2020 through May of 2020. If you remember, our cash funds weren't at the same... They didn't receive dollars from the state or from the federal to reimburse our staff in the very first few months of COVID. Last year, during the actual fiscal year, it changed. All of the students and anyone who participated could access through free and reduced. In a sense, we could serve all students and families, but those first couple of months, when we shut down completely, even though we were doing curbside, we still had all of our staff to pay because we had to pay all staff through the end of the fiscal year. So we did some journal entries on that and some journal entries on our transportation staff during that period of time. ESER I and ESER II was a combination of 17 million. We bought 4,466 Chromebooks, 1,547 Elite Books. Now, we also bought a lot more Chrome and HP books through our bond, but this was just specifically from our federal dollars. ESER II funds were very specific. We had almost a couple hundred staff members dedicated to online. At one point, I think we had 12,000 to 14,000 students at the very beginning of the year that were online. That dwindled down throughout the year, but ultimately, we had a couple hundred FTE that were dedicated to our Chandler Online for the fiscal year of 2020.
Lana? So I guess the dumb question of the night. Explain what a Chromebook is versus a laptop versus the HP Elite Books?
Sure. Mr. Fletcher, would you like to do that?
I'm calling.
I'm calling.
It just has to do with the type of product it is, how much memory it has, what it'll do. So a Chromebook is on the low end. We use those mostly for student transactions. Your laptops are used primarily for administrators. So it's just a matter of what they do and how they perform.
So the Elite Books would be a laptop, the regular laptop?
Close to that, yep.
Okay.
And those 1,547 went out to teachers. Those HB Elite Books, I believe, went out to teachers, and the Chromebooks were used for our students, correct? All right. So now, just starting to talk about ESER III. The priorities for ESER III really haven't changed from the priorities of ESER I and II, but again, still very important to know on a national level, the very first thing that's important is safe in-person schooling. Student engagement and wellness, we know that that's critical. Enrollment and attendance, teacher professional growth, rewarding working conditions and retention, academic growth measured against current and pre-COVID baselines, and then a focus on equity for all of the above students most impacted by the pandemic. So those are the national level priorities that were put out there for us to look at and then to base our priorities on. Chandler's priorities...
Lana, can we go back to that real quick? So enrollment and attendance, can you use that on marketing?
You can. Absolutely. And that part of it is, we know, there was 50,000 students across our state that weren't connected last year. So that is a problem. Now, we have a couple of problems in our district. One is the lack of students that we don't even know where they went. They did not enter another school district. They did not enter a charter school, a private school. We cannot find out where they're at, and that's part of that 50,000. Then we have other students who went outside of our boundaries, and we want them back because we want to serve the students within our boundaries. So there's two issues. Both need to be addressed. So priorities for Chandler Unified School District, support students' mental and physical health, ensure strong classroom instruction, implement academic recovery strategies, retain and prepare a stable workforce for the future, and innovate and redesign traditional education experiences for long-term success. So for us, we will be working on these. Frank's going to talk in a minute about our nine specific priorities to get us there, but these are more of generic that would help us compare when we're looking at the national versus our priorities here at Chandler Unified Schools.
Okay, Lana. Now, I'm confused. So I thought less ESER III, you had to have the input of the community.
We do. So I'll get to that in just a minute.
Okay.
Let me explain that.
So where do these...
They're just what we have been spending our ESER dollars on, our ESER I and our II, and where we have taken our federal dollars and are focusing on them, and those will still continue. They don't change. They didn't go away. They're there right now, and then we'll get community input, and we'll make adjustments from that point. So it's just where we've been with this for the last year and how we've been spending our federal dollars. So next steps are ESER III planning and requirements. So one of the requirements for ESER III is that you take out at least 20%, and with that 20%, you have to spend it on learning loss. And those activities include summer learning or enrichment programs, extended day programs, comprehensive after-school programs, extended school year programs, and then school day interventions. And so all of that will be part of the plan that we come up with and that we get input on. The other 80% can be spent on all the other priorities, but 20% has to, the minimal amount has to be spent on loss of learning, where ESER I and ESER II didn't have a percentage on specific things. This one is very specific. The next thing that ESER III requires us to do is have community outreach. So the LEA must engage in a meaningful consultation with stakeholders and provide the public the opportunity to provide input and take such input into account in the development of their plan. It has to give feedback, and it has to be collected on a six-month cycle, and then stakeholders must include these groups of people: students, families, other educators, school staff and their unions, teachers, principals, school leaders, school and district administrators. So all of those people will be included in this process as we go forward. The other couple of criteria is it must be in an understandable format. So once we put it together, people need to be able to understand it in that format. It needs to be simple and clear and transparent. We also need to make sure it's practical, and it needs to be written in a language that parents can understand, and that it's also included in our ADA so that everyone is able to participate and access it. And then we have to publish it on our website. So those are the criteria of our upcoming plan. So now what I'm going to do is I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Narducci, and he's going to go through nine potential strategies that are important, and he's going to take everything on from here.
Thank you, Lana. And Mr. Wirth, to answer your question, we have to come up with a straw design for people to look at. Otherwise, we'll never get to a consensus of where we need to move forward. So I've been meeting with superintendents across the state as to where they feel the most bang for their buck or to be able to actually get to student loss or, as we like to call it also, unfinished learning. Because remember, this isn't only just students that were in the gap and needed the gap filled and needed to move forward. These are also students that were in accelerated classrooms too that may have had some unfinished learning done during the time that they were out or away from school. So one of the areas that we've been talking about is formative-driven assessment and data analysis to determine individual students impacted by unfinished learning. Now, this is really important because teachers need assistance and help with understanding with each child where they are, and the only thing you can look at is their data. They have to know their students by the individual data, and we've started a mission with our administrators just this week at our administrative retreat of knowing your students by really digging into the data that they... The achievement data that they have and that we have access to. They're called student success indicators, but we need to help each site, each of our 45 sites, for 44,000 students so that we know where they are, where our students are, so we're not treating a classroom or a school or a group as you're all on the same page or the same place in learning, which they're not. They're in all diverse areas of learning. So that's one of the areas that individuals are looking at and that we know since good instructional practices are based on data-driven and effective practices, that that's where we have to start. Also, K-12 intervention supports, which is the next bullet, and materials to support classroom teachers and their students through our multi-tiered system of support. A multi-tiered system of support is required for every student to be able to go through a little study of what are they missing academically, what are they missing to be able to be successful in the classroom, and then how do we backfill that for them individually at each site. And so our teachers need supports. They need materials. They need to know what materials to use at what time. And so a lot of that is at the point of discovery and not waiting for a tutoring session, but happening in the classroom at the time it's happening because if we allow students to wait too long, then we have more gap to fill. So we have to do it right at, and what we like to call, the point of discovery, when you know a child's struggling, we need a backfill right then and there. Targeted and intensive tutoring. This is also has to be evidence-based tutoring. And what we mean by tutoring is not a student coming into a classroom and saying, "I don't know what I don't know." Because if a student doesn't know where they're not doing well, our tutoring needs to help them be focused and so on the area of support that they need. So that's an area that we feel. We also feel in space and time that students might need tutoring outside of the school day. And so how do they access that tutoring outside of the school day? How do we look at things differently than what we've looked at in the past? So we need to look at when that tutoring is offered. Is it accessible to students when they're doing their homework or they don't get a concept at 9 o'clock at night? Intentionality of academic outreach through clubs, be it before and after-school programming. We have lots of before and after-school programming. How intentional are we being in providing academic outreach? Not changing the focus of where they're at and what they're doing because that's what parents want them to be involved in, but are we building on skills that we know that they need to build on? And then I skipped a bullet there, which was extended learning. We'd like to offer at our schools, and this will be weighed out through the community input, with extended learning. Some might need extended day learning. Some might need extended week learning. Some might need learning during intercessions and summer. And understand, this isn't all. This is for who needs it and who can participate in and who we can move forward. So this isn't something that we would provide for all students because it may not be needed for all students, but for those that need it, we want to provide it. Also, professional development is going to be key. If we're moving ESER III goals and initiatives forward, we need to look at the professional development that we're providing teachers so that they can do the data analysis and that it guides the intentional instruction and high-yield strategies that we want to utilize in classrooms. We know that high-yield strategies will help students apply their learning at a higher degree, which will help them learn more. So we want to make sure those strategies are being implemented in all of our classrooms. And when we say all of our classrooms, all means all, that there's not a classroom that a teacher feels uncomfortable with that, but that's support that we can provide our teachers to be able to do that. Many of them are doing that right now, but we want to make sure that everybody feels comfortable moving forward. And again, as I've coined a little phrase, it's what we do most of the time, not some of the time. And so a lot of these strategies that we put in and supports we put in have to be utilized most of the time. Also, increasing our student access to blended learning. What I mean by blended is the use of technology in their learning so that the technology and the learning, the static learning, are combined together to move students forward, which would increase the inside and outside of the classroom learning through increased technology devices, and most of all, in our district, connectivity, that our kids have accessibility and no child doesn't have the accessibility. They need to move that forward. Also, one of the areas that have been weighed out across districts and across the state are K-12 site-based data and instructional strategy coaches. There's research-based says when staff go to something like a PD, a professional development piece, and then they come back into the classroom, they'll apply like 10% of that back in the classroom. But a better model is when you have coaches at schools that are really there to give support and give instructional support. 90% of what you're doing gets passed on to what's happening in the classroom. So we want to go with the 90%. And so this is one of the things we'll be discussing with, at the community meeting as well, is how can we provide site-based coaches at the schools that may not be evaluative, but they're strategies-driven, data-driven supports for our schools, for our teachers so that by the end of ESER III, we actually have more, when ESER III funds are pulled, we have more development that was done with all of our classrooms that we can see than if we just kept doing PD where people go to and hopefully, we think those things are being measured. Again, when you do this, the coaching, which a lot of school districts are going with, there has to be feedback that's provided. And so a lot of times, and we'll discuss this in our public meeting with the community rounds, where professionals go around and give input, feedback. That's where the change comes in. And so it's not just popping somebody there and hopefully, it will stick. It's actually giving the feedback and putting in a cycle of learning so that people feel comfortable moving forward and they feel supported. And then the last area that we know that some of the school districts are moving towards, and we'd like to look at it, is staffing for high-intensity intervention models. Our staffing model for the district is pretty healthy. I mean, we have districts around us that staff at a very higher rate, some 30 to 1, some higher than that. We're staffing at 23, 24 to 1, which is very favorable. But however, there may be some situations where we may have an intensive group coming through that a co-teaching model may assist or that we may need to put more supports there so we can fill that gap at that grade level.[1777.01] And so, these are our specific targeted areas that we think need to be discussed. It's not inclusive. There's other areas that we may be looking at and that we may add to it, but we think in starting a plan to capture the kids we need to, to address unfinished learning, that these would be high-yield intensive strategies that would help us get there.
All right. So, to wrap it up, the next steps for the SRR 3 stakeholder meeting that will take place is tonight is just a study session to explain the federal funding and a little bit of a recap, especially for people who are watching online, who want to be able to participate in the future and then to update the governing board. But our next step will be in August. We will get out information, but we will have an SRR 3 input meeting with stakeholders, including parents, citizens, district administration, all of those that meet that criteria. We will get out information on our website on how to participate in that. We will make sure that we gather all stakeholders' input for our first initial meeting, get out information. Mr. Narducci will be able to go over strategies. We'll do a lot of different things during that meeting, but just wanted to let everyone know that that will be towards the end of August and we will get that information out.
If we have higher participation for that parent meeting, we may do it virtually to where we can, like we've done our curriculum reviews, so that others can join and be able to have input as well. But we will, as soon as school starts and our students are back in, we'll be getting information out of how that will work. And our goal is to be able to get the input and prioritize the input from our families and from our stakeholder groups.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, it is. I'm sorry. Thank you very much. It's a lot of money that we'll be receiving from the SRR 3 and I think that having the priority, I mean, obviously, the national priority is to address these learning losses and unfinished learning. And so, having good strategies in place to be able to utilize this money for that is imperative. And I appreciate you going over this. So, you're thinking the end of August is when we're looking at starting these? Yes, that will be our goal. So, we'll have, like Mr. Narducci talked about, we'll have an original plan that we can share and go over strategies and then be able to gather feedback from our community and all the stakeholder groups. So, we want to make sure that we get it out there, they know what it is, they have time to look through information that we do have available for them, and then we'll go from there. Great. Are there any other questions?
I had one. This is a good list and I don't care which one of these we do. It all looks okay. The, I did go down a rabbit hole the other day before I saw this list on extended learning. And the thing that was really hard, like you start searching that and you, there's like dozens and dozens and dozens of different opinions both ways if you search the internet on if it's good or it's bad. So, it's like, we need to kind of, when we have these meetings, we kind of need to have some facts or some good facts. It's not just, you know, something somebody read on the internet about these things.
And, Mr. Wirth, also, we have to understand that that may work for some students, but not for all students. That's why I think we have to have a myriad of approaches so that we don't leave any student behind, because not any one of these is going to work for all students. We know what we do in the classrooms every day. We'll make a difference.
Oh, yeah. I'm just saying, I'm just saying, when we have the discussion on all these, every bullet point here is a rabbit hole, but when we have the discussion about those, you know, having facts about them that are good, reliable facts is kind of a challenge.
Yes. And then, the other thing I wanted to clarify, if I can, Lana, is at our administrative meeting this week as well, I just want to clarify that $30 million is for the three years. So, whatever we invest in the first year, I would anticipate that our support would be that we're investing in that for three years so that we can really make a difference versus, and that is $30 million one time. I had somebody ask me and said, "Well, we get $30 million a year?" No, we don't get $30 million a year. So, whatever we invest in year one, we're going to lock that in unless it's not needed and then we'll pull back.
Are there any other comments or questions from board members? Ms. Brunner?
Thank you so much for the presentation and all the time everyone's put into looking into this. So, I did have a few questions and Mr. Narducci just answered one of them about spreading it out over the three years. And then, I was just checking to see when staff and community are included on the decisions. Do we have any idea what that's going to look like logistically? Like, will there be surveys or will it be an in-person or virtual meeting kind of thing? Or, how are we planning to get a wide representation in those?
I can answer that for you. It's, so, we've had really good luck with some survey systems that are electronic so that we can get true recording, but that people can see the results in time, like Mentimeter is one of those. And then, our assessment team, that is brand new, they were just hired this year, they came up with some alternatives too that also provide a way for us to go back and evaluate. Because part of this plan is we have to go back every six months and do a checkup. So, every six months, we have to go back and make sure that with the same stakeholder group, that we're putting some reports out as to how effective we are and what parts of the program are being utilized or what parts of the funding are being utilized. That's all a requirement in SRR 3. So, we will do that, but we would get the feedback on something that we can manipulate data with. What I mean by that is pull out specific data. Like, how do we feel about this one strategy? Is it really being utilized? Is that money being utilized well? Is that a strategy that we do normally at schools anyway or is that a strategy we have to add? Because remember, the three years of SRR 3 is to get our kids back engaged and caught up. It isn't meant to go on forever, but there's great practices that we need to put into our schools and we may discover that something works really well in these three years that we may want to look at and say, "This is a practice that we're going to continue." And then, of course, we'll have to find funds for it, but unless it's a non-funded issue and it's something that our teachers do.
So, my only two concerns with the survey, I think they're really vital to getting information. I just worry about the folks who might be the most greatly impacted by COVID, might be the folks who don't have access to the technology or time to do that or communication with the school to know that it exists. And so, I don't know what it looks like, but maybe we could brainstorm with some of the sites that have a high population of those kinds of families to see what else we can do to get their input. And then, my other question is, is there a way to include the folks at each site in, before the survey's created, about like what are the options? Just in case they come up with a few cool ideas that, you know, administration didn't think of or maybe someone went to a training somewhere with something that was really successful, you know, somewhere that we didn't know about or, I mean, it just could be helpful prior to the survey to say, "Hey, just dump us ideas. Maybe Wendy could collect them." I don't know how it would work, but just throw in that idea out there.
Those are good suggestions.
And then, there were a lot of sites that I've been visiting over the last six months or so that do have some concerns about the technology either coming back or when it comes back, the laptops or Chromebook is bubbled or, you know, so, do we have the resources to get back to where we were for, or where we were heading, right? We were on the upswing with technology before COVID. And I'm just a little worried that we might regress a little bit with that because of all those issues. And I was wondering what that looks like. Is there any plan for that or?
We definitely have the resources to be able to do that and Ms. Flannery is taking over that area and she will be putting a plan together that I believe the board will be seeing eventually related to future-ready schools and making sure. But we do have money available. And Mr. Fletcher, is there anything else you want to add to that?
We have enough to get back to where we were pre-COVID.
Okay.
So, we don't anticipate a loss.
Okay. Let's see. I think I have one more. So, one other question, it's kind of related to this and it was, when we calculate student teacher ratios, obviously enrollment went down. Did we absorb the loss of ADM through our staff from natural attrition and then, so are we, I guess my question is, are we at the same ratio we were before COVID, student teacher ratio? Or is it, does it look a little different now? And, because that would impact how we spend SRR, right?
When we were doing our budget cuts and through attrition and that or repurposing some of our staff into other positions, class sizes, you'll see, are similar. Now, we do have our online students who have returned, so in comparison to last year's pandemic.
Right.
It's going to look larger, but we are still within the range we've had the past several years.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anything else for, from the board?
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Berry. And I know that we will be having our public hearing on our district annual proposed expenditure budget. And, Mrs. Berry, I believe you will also be following up with the public hearing on the truth in taxation also, on both those agenda items. So, this is Berry.
All right. Madam President, members of the board, tonight I'm going to review our adopted expenditure budget in a little bit more detail than I did when, a couple of weeks ago, when we approved the proposed budget. It's the exact same budget. No numbers have changed within that budget. And we actually will be receiving, I think, the new forms for the budget tomorrow. So, we used our old forms, actually, forms they created, but not the new legislative forms. So, you'll actually receive another budget before September. We got criteria today that we have to revise our budget by the end of September because of all the numbers that were approved by the legislature. As you know, it was one of the longest legislative sessions in history, at least in the last few decades, I think the third longest. And so, unfortunately, they were not able to produce those new forms and budgets. So, you'll be revising the budget before September. We'll probably bring it to you in August, but at the latest, it would be September. But tonight, you're approving, you're being asked to approve the adopted expenditure budget for fiscal year '21, '22. And a lot of times, you hear fiscal year '22 because that is the actual year that we end. And so, when people refer to this year, it is really fiscal year '22 for a school year. So, here are a list of things that we're going to cover. We're going to talk about the legislative updates. We are going to review the tax rate because that impacts our community. We're going to talk about the budget highlights and then we're going to talk a little bit. We already mostly have already talked about the federal stimulus money, but we'll just kind of revise or talk about what's in this year's budget compared to last year's. We're going to show the aggregated budget, which is made up of levy funds and federal funds, when you combine those together, and the average teacher salary, because that's required by statute to be produced out on our website and also on the front of our budget. We're going to review our projected ADM and talk a little bit about that because obviously that is the basis for our budget. It's the number of students we have and the miles we drive. That's the simple part of our budget. We're going to delve into the budget cuts that we had to take because of the loss of ADM from last year. And then, we're going to analyze the increase in our approved budget, because we did have some increases that we approved through our super queue. It's our, kind of our meet and confer type of process with our certified staff, classified staff and administration staff. We're going to examine some of the new budget expenditures and then I'll recap the comparison between this year and last year, very similar. I'll show you kind of the numbers that we did when we talked about the proposed budget and then we'll cover the upcoming reports and revisions. So, legislative updates. One of the biggest things that happened was that, as you all know, probably within your own home, is that assessed values have increased, which means that the legislature voted to have the qualifying tax rate decrease. So, when assessed values go up, the qualifying tax rate goes down. And so, for us, that went from $3.67 to $3.53 on the qualifying tax rate. A lot of people think that the governing board sets the tax rate and it does not necessarily. The state legislature sets the tax rate for the qualifying tax rate for public school districts. Charter schools are completely funded through the state general fund. Public schools, like districts like ours, are funded first through property tax, through the primary and secondary tax, and then the other portion comes through state aid based on assessed values. Base level for the 2020 increase, as you can recall, there was a lawsuit that was taken because Prop 301, that was voted on by the voters back in the early 2000s, said that you always get inflation or 2%, the lesser of the two. And then, for during the great recession of '07 through '08, they did not give us inflation during that period of time. And then, as you all can remember, Prop 123 came in and we all voted that said that there was money to restore kind of the lawsuit and help settle the lawsuit related to how much money schools get in the base of support. So, we kind of solved that issue related to inflation. And so, now, every year, we get inflation or 2%, the lesser of the two. So, we increased our base level support from $4,305 to $4,390. And that's without teacher compensation, but that piece is the base. District additional assistance was fully restored. I'm very proud of that because it's something our district fought for five years ago. We went to our senators and our House of Representatives and the governor's office to really fight for restoration of district additional assistance and capital. At one point, we were down to 20% of our capital allocation and now we are finally fully restored in capital. And it was something that we spent a lot of time advocating for and is extremely important coming, especially now that we know how technology is critical within our schools since we've been through COVID and just maintaining our facilities, furniture and equipment, all of those pieces that are needed within our school district. Gap funding, something again that we're also very excited about that got approved. You're going to get more information about gap funding coming up in the next budget because it hasn't been released on the exact amount. We will get that allocation from the State Department, but we don't have that amount, but we fought very hard for that. And gap funding comes to districts who did not receive the medium amount of federal assistance that all school districts across the state got. We got less than that amount. And so, it helps backfill a portion of that so that we can help our students meet those learning loss needs that other student, or other school districts received funding for. So, for our district, that will be important. We will mirror, or we will combine that with our SRR 3 funding to really make a difference over the next couple of years. That funding will be good for two years. It's a one-time amount, but good for two years and SRR is good for three years. So, it will be part of that overall plan. Special education funding was increased and Dr. Marshall was very helpful and went down to the legislature to speak and to help. We got a little portion of special education funding increased. It has not been increased in a few decades. A couple of the weights have increased and so, when we bring the revised budget back, and that's not in the forms yet, but once we bring the revised budget back, we will see the differences on those weights, which is helpful. Still not a complete fix, but there was $50 million given to the entire state. We will get a small portion of that.
So, Lana, in the past, they used to do a cost study to determine which weights needed to be adjusted. How did they determine which ones to do this time?
So, they met with a number of our special education directors. There were some cohorts of groups that would speak and work together on a bill. We have presented a number of things to them. They have not done a cost study yet. I think the Department of Education is planning on doing that cost study in the future, but this is $50 million. So, how can we take $50 million and where is it most used or best used? And that came from our directors in our schools. Where did they think that $50 million could be used best? We need more than $50 million, but there was $50 million that they were willing to allocate and then our directors, in a sense, gave input to where that money could be spent.
You're not required to spend all of that in that specific category if not necessary, right?
Right. That's correct. Opportunity weight, again, there is some funding in that for schools to be able to access money to help. Avondale, for example, is a school district who used some money through a grant system and they're basing it off of some of those success stories, utilizing opportunity weight and funding for schools who have higher free and reduced lunch and then some specific programs and targeted for underachievement in areas to increase achievement. Transportation support level for fiscal '22 increased. That's part of the lawsuit from Prop 301 and the Prop 123. So, it went from $2.74 to $2.77. And then, Prop 301, I think, is the biggest amount that was increased overall. When you look at our aggregated budget and you see the difference between this year and next year, it's really related to Prop 301. It went from $453 up to $733. Now, 192 of that was one-time amount because it's based on last year's tax that was collected. So, we have a one-time amount to spend and then an ongoing amount of about $531 to spend related to Prop 301.
Can I just ask a question?
Yes.
So, with the weight changes, I know, like, for example, the gifted funding, if I remember correctly, a few years ago, we calculated it out and it was like we get eight bucks for a gifted kid, right? So, what does this increase actually mean?
Sure.
Like, I'm just trying to picture dollars rather than weight.
Yes, and I will bring that back to you without stating a wrong number this afternoon. I wanted to make sure we get the forms in before I incorrectly respond to that.
Thank you.
I went over that with Mrs. Caviar. She's the one who helps with all of this and done a great job, but we wanted to wait to make sure I give you the correct number until we get the new forms and we put it all in. So, I will give you that, I promise, but it'll be when we revise it in August, if that's okay.
Could you give us like a 30-second explanation of an update on Prop 208? If that's, anything's changed on that?
Sure. So, Prop 208 has not impacted our budget yet at all. There's no dollars that are approved that are part of the overall fiscal budget. And I know there's a lot going on related to that, but that hasn't impacted our budget yet. We will receive more and more information, but it's not in the approved budget or forms currently. All right. So, tax rates, they're probably, one of the most important things right on the cover sheet is our tax rate. And our tax rate in fiscal year 2021 was $6.41. And this year, it's $6.07. Now, again, remember, the assessed values in the state went up, so that qualifying tax rate went down. So, we should see a reduction in the qualifying tax rate because your homes and your commercial properties will be increasing. So, the primary tax rate, which is, will be decreasing by .1285, and the secondary will be decreasing by .2046. And again, it's related, majority of that is because your assessed values of your homes have increased. There is a cap of 5% on that. But ultimately, you will see a tax rate decrease, but not necessarily the amount that you're paying will go down, but the tax rate has gone down. We do think that for the majority of people, I'm going to show you, the tax rate will slightly go down overall, but it's pretty much flat for this next fiscal year. So, here are, if you want to compare tax rates for your bonds, you can see that our bonds were at $1.29, $1.27. We didn't think that it would go past $1.29 ever. If you look at the voter pamphlet, we are at $1.19. And again, thankful to assessed values going up. That means your tax rate goes down. Does not necessarily mean it's a difference on how much it's going to be paid out, but ultimately, the tax rate will go down. The override, same issue. And then, the primary because of the qualifying tax rate and also because of adjacent ways. And we're going to talk about that in a minute. So, the result of the tax decrease is actually a 5% tax rate decrease, not dollar amount, but tax rate decrease. It's equivalent to because of assessed values going up, and especially here in Maricopa and in Chandler boundaries. We went, as we already stated, the qualifying tax rate went down, so that was the major impact. And then, also, our adjacent ways went down. So, even though there's a truth in taxation tonight that you're going to see, and some people think, wow, that's a huge percent of an increase for truth in taxation, adjacent ways, which is what we have to produce with our truth in taxation, is only 1% of the overall tax rate. So, the $2.5 million that's part of adjacent ways is only 1%, 1.26% of the entire tax. It's gone down because we had a larger amount. We had over $4 million last year in the adjacent way line item because we were trying to finish and start, finish one elementary school and start our seventh high school. So, this year, adjacent ways has gone down, but there still is a truth in taxation notice.
So, will adjacent ways take care of all of the needs, or do we have to support other funds to support that?
No, it should take care of our needs.
Okay.
And there is actually money in there to also help with other areas that adjacent ways covers, fire lanes, you know, areas that are adjacent to public properties besides our current high school. The override decreased, again, just based on assessed values and because our override went down. It's based on prior year funding. And so, override is based on the number of students from last year. So, that was, that has decreased because our number of kids from 2021 have decreased compared to our students in 1920. So, it's part of the reason that also that rate went down. The bond decreased, but again, just based on assessed values. All right, so, here is a comparison of last year's tax rates to East Valley. We always come and show the board the comparison. We had two districts that were slightly below us. I think Gilbert Unified and Tempe Chirene, they were below ours. And mostly, the difference for that is related to our bonds. If you see Gilbert's bonds overall, their tax rate was 1.09. Ours was 1.27. That's because we have a larger bond and we were still, we're still continuing to build schools. Also, sometimes, when you, when you notice increases, if you look at, for example, Queen Creek and you see their bonds are at 2.03, they don't have the assessed value that we have here in Chandler. So, a lot of times, the increase isn't necessarily based on how much you're borrowing. It's just based also on your assessed value. So, this does matter with the value that are in your district and how much your assessed value is equivalent to. Now, this year, we, the only district that's, that's less than us is Gilbert Unified. And mostly, it's related to our bonds. You can see our bonds are a little bit more. But again, we have built another high school, an elementary school, and we have other expenditures for a growing district, and that's part of that. But again, second, I think, we're, besides Gilbert, we're almost the exact amount. We are the second to lowest in the East Valley. Liability, what we do every year, and I think Mr. Wirth started this years ago, and we still compare. We take four properties and we do a few others too outside of that. But we take these four and we compare them every year. You can see back from 2013 to where we are with our property taxes. And here in Arizona, we have a very favorable property tax. It's very low. You can see that this year, property one, that's valued at assessed value at 313 is probably worth more than that, but the, on the assessed value roll, 313,000, they are going to pay approximately $1,908. So, it'll be about $12 less. So, even though the tax rate decreased by 5%, it's pretty much flat compared to the past. Same thing, you can see property number two at $401,000, slight decrease, same thing, $5 decrease on $100,000 property, and then, on a $300,000 property, down about $11. So, overall, that doesn't mean every property will go down dollar-wise, but on the average, most residential properties should see that.
So, to stress that, if we pass the override, what the homeowner is going to pay is they're going to pay a little bit less if the override passes.
They're going to continue to pay this. It's a continuation, so it should continue.
So, those numbers up there reflect...
They would stay approximately the same. There's no new tax with the override.
And that's what's critical for sharing that information with the community. The override is not going to increase taxes.
Right. Great point. Just a continuation. No new tax whatsoever. Also, when you see the truth in taxation, notice that we're required to post, this is part of that tax. So, even though it looks like a big increase, the way that the truth in taxation notice is posted, it's not. It's 1% of our overall tax. It's actually gone down compared to the year before, and it's part of that overall tax. It's not an additional tax on top of that. All right, so, just to recap, for our levy funds, we had the increase in the base support level. Couple different things. We had the inflation makes that up. So, we're, we get a 1.23% inflation amount that increased by $53. And our base support level also increased because of the bridge of $40. When the governor gave the 20 by 2020 plan, he, he used Prop 301 money for one year to bridge that. And this year, that money comes out of the general fund, so it's part of the maintenance and operations fund. So, it's not new money. It's just shifted, in a sense. It's a bridge because last year, it was paid for, out of Prop 301, and this year, it comes from, out of M and L. There won't be a distance learning adjustment, so that's a great thing for us because last year, that was a $4 million reduction. Could have been 12, was 4. And so, we won't have that this year. That's fantastic. Our teacher experience has decreased slightly. That's based every year, based on the state average. And so, it's not necessarily anything we're doing here. It's just they take the average teacher experience from the prior year for the, for the teachers that they have across the state, and they compare it, your district to other districts. Ours has slightly gone down. So, that impacts us financially slightly. The transportation revenue control limit stayed the same, but the TSL decreased, and that's because we weren't open for that first portion of the year. We didn't open in July. School districts couldn't open until August 17th, and then, we started in September and October. So, our overall route miles decreased, so the transportation support level decreased. So, there is a slight tax increase because we have to pay the difference between the transportation support level and the transportation revenue control limit. But we didn't lose funding on the transportation revenue side, on the budget side. It's just our tax rate is slightly adjusted because of that. District additional assistance was completely funded, and as we talked about, Prop 301 increased. Now, with Prop 301, last year, we gave, we give as the performance pay portion $3,200 to our staff members. We had to use some of our contingency from the year before to keep up with the $3,200. But now that it's increased from $425 to $470, or $733, we're able to keep it at the typical $3,200. We thought we might have to decrease that. We do not have to do that. And then, we're going to take that one-time amount, and we'll be able to determine with our teachers, we have not made a decision on that, but will this year, how we're going to compensate them. Because it is teacher compensation specifically for them, you can't use on other things. You are supposed to use it for teacher compensation. And that will be determined and brought back to you as a board. The school facilities board is funding land and new construction. We're at the end of that, so we don't get any benefits. But what you will see in the budget, if you were to look at it, is $7.5 million to Chandler, and that's actually for our high school. It's, they reimburse us for our expenses, and they do that over a two-year period of time. And so, part of that was from last year, and then, we received the last $7.5 this year for our, our new high school. Results-based funding is projected, again, at 2.7. We should get approximately 2.7. We think it could be increase or decrease, but we are waiting on that. On the college career, college credit by examination, we also are waiting on that to see the results of our AP exams, and we should be projected at receiving approximately the same amount as we received last year.
That's a new fund for me. Help, what is...
Sure. So, for the last couple of years, if you pass the, legislation was written to fund teachers, and you can give 50%, up to 50% to teachers for students who have passed an AP exam.
Okay. So, what is the yearly amount you normally receive?
It's about $900,000.
Okay.
And so, teachers receive 50% of that, and then, we use the other 50% to do professional development for teachers that are in those classes and courses or for supplies for those programs. You can also spend it now. The new law allows you to spend it on other teachers besides the teacher of record, and we will be determining how to do that moving forward.
Yeah, because if you don't, it can be incredibly unfair to many teachers.
It is, definitely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Other cash funds, community education and food service are cash funds. Those increased because last year, we decreased those budgets. But now, that we're opening in July and should be moving forward, we've increased both of those budgets. Other cash funds, some of those have increased due to the pandemic because there were some revenues coming in, but there weren't a lot of expenditures going out. For example, we didn't have a lot of field trips or extracurricular activities. So, some of those funds were sitting there. Some of them have gained because of interest or other things, but we did not, weren't able to travel and do some of those extracurricular activities that some of our cash funds are, were in receipt of. Grants and state funds, federal and state grants will be updated. Once we finish the completion reports, you'll see that revision in December. We have until the middle of September to finish majority of our federal grants and get those completion reports in. We're paying all the bills, finalizing all the journal entries. So, you'll get an update on all the federal and state grants. The only grant that's super critical is we know exactly how much we get for SIR III, the $30,661,000. That's in this budget because it's part of this fiscal year, and we've already spent SIR I, II, and the enrollment stability grant. So, those are out of this budget. So, that's, they're almost the same amount overall when you add them together. ESG, SIR I and SIR II are about the same exact amount as what SIR III total is. We have received some money for the school safety program, at almost $1 million for fiscal year '21. SEI funding is significantly reduced. That kind of goes up and down based on our English language learner and the numbers we turn in. It's based on an account of our students and how many students we have in each classroom compared to the number of teachers, and that goes up and down each year. It's down approximately 60% this year.
What is it, Lana?
The SEI budget, Fund 071, that's for English language learners and our supplemental educational, I think it's called supplemental educational. What's SEI specifically?
How is it funded? Is it funded through the special education?
Structured English Instruction. No, it's not. It's, it's our, in a sense, it's its own capacity, but it's not a group B funding source. No, it's not part of group B.
How do they determine the amount, based on the kids?
Based on the number of students and then, the staff that we have to serve those students in each of those classrooms.
Okay.
And then, gap funding, which is new, and school districts like ours will be receiving because we didn't receive the average amount that school districts across the state received for federal stimulus money. And so, that helps us backfill a small portion to help us address the COVID issues that we have in our school district. This was a slide that you got to see earlier related to our federal stimulus money. We have already spent the enrollment stability grant, the SIR I and the SIR II money. The only amount that will be in this year's fiscal year's budget, the one you're adopting tonight, will be SIR III at $30,600,000. We do not have specific line items for that until we have community input and we gather that, and then, we will be determining how we will spend that. So, right now, it is a line item in there, but doesn't have specific expenditures associated with it until we get through that planning process and have community input. So, on your cover sheet, which is the sheet that you actually sign as the governing board, there is the aggregated school district budget. And it has your maintenance and operations dollar, which is our largest fund, 90% of the funds that come out of your maintenance and operations funds are salaries and benefits for our staff. We, our community, or our school community is made up of 5,000 employees, and majority of those salaries and benefits come from that fund specifically. Our unrestricted capital budget, we've included carryover and our new allocation of our capital budget is $36 million, and our federal projects is $46 million. With that, the majority of that $46 million are two funds. One is your SIR III at $30 million. The other large fund in there would be your Title I fund, and then, another fund would be your special education IDA funds. But those are the funds that make that up. We have other funds that are associated, but those are your main funds, and they're considered your aggregated school district budget limit on the cover sheet. One of the things also on the cover sheet that you're signing is the average teacher salary. So, we are required by statute, this happened a few years ago, once Governor Ducey's 20 by 2020 went into place, is to place the average teacher salary right on the cover sheet. Our average teacher salary for this year, we estimate to be at $63,000. Last year's average was $61,000. The increase is about $1,700 because our raise was approximately 3%. That's why you see that percentage increase. It's between 2.5 to 3%. Now, a couple of things. The only thing included in this is Prop 301 and their base salary. There's no coaching stipends, no professional development stipends, none of those department stipends that they get. Any of that is outside of it. It only includes two things, their base salary and their Prop 301 profession, or Prop 301 performance pay. So, all those other things are not included in that. That would increase the actual average across our district. This only includes those two basic things. All right, so, jumping into the budget overall, our ADM is the driving factor of our budget. Like I said before, to simplify our budget, it's based on the number of students we have and the miles driven. Those are the two main factors that create how much budget capacity we can spend. So, you can see, we have been growing for years. Last year, during the pandemic, we reduced our average daily membership by approximately 2,000 students. We kept that number. When we were meeting with our staff, we didn't know where our students and how many of our students were returned. We do believe, we think, and we're starting to see numbers every day. So, we're hoping that a lot of those students who are not connected are going to come back or chose a different school district or charter school or private school and are in our boundaries and want to come back to us. We hope that they will rejoin us and those enrollment numbers will go up. We do believe that they'll continue to go up as we see housing to continue to come in. And we're doing great things here in Chandler to attract students into our school district. So, budget cuts, one thing we had to do, since we reduced the number of students that we had, we had to reduce our overall budget. We kept our budget last year when we opened schools, not knowing that we would lose a couple thousand students. And so, this year, we are planning for those students since we know that our ADM has dropped. And so, I think, Mrs. Brunner, we had, one of the questions you had for us, and it was a great question, was what percentage of your staff, when we did the reductions, were classified, administered and certified? So, the chart on the, on your left right here, 44% is classified in our district, 53% is certified in our district, and 2.3% are administrators. If you were to look at the number of FTEs and the dollar amount, in a sense, that's the percentage of staff that we have in every, in each of these areas. The percentage of discontinued positions of administration, we cut 5.27%. Certified staff, 5.48%. And, I mean, so, yeah, certified staff. And classified staff, we didn't cut quite a percent. Now, part of that is because from maintenance and operations is where the impact was because that's where we lose the ADM.[1678.87] Food service, community ed, we took that loss last year. Those stu, they went out, they're on at-will contracts. And some of those were reduced based on that. So this is really based on your maintenance and operation dollars. But I know you'd asked for it. So we thought we'd present that information and explain those percentages. We, we did cut $12.2 million worth through attrition. Dr. Nance did a fantastic job of working with our staff and through retirements and through attrition, we were able to meet that goal. That was our first step, was to get down and address because what we believed was that we needed to align our staffing with our students so that we could then take the new money coming in through inflation and other budget increases and be able to retain and attract our staff. So we were able to reduce staff so that when the additional dollars came in, we were able to use that to increase staff raises to account for the inflation factors that are taking place. So with that, the adjustments that we were able to make, we increased our budget from the base support level for inflation by $3 million. There, that bridge from Prop 301 is approximately about $2 million. We didn't have to adjust for distance learning, so we added that back into our budget of $4 million. We did have to reduce about $1 million of our override because it's based on prior year accounts. So that's a million of it. Warrants, TANs, additional Prop 301 money was about $400,000. And then our carryover was an additional 3.3 million. So our total that we added to our maintenance and operation budget was approximately about $12 million. We were, with fully restoring capital, that was an additional, with the increase of the last year, that's an additional $2.4 million. And we were able to carry over $5.4 million to put towards our plan for the future. And then our classroom site fund, the biggest increase was going from the $425 up to the $733. That's an extra $16 million. Part of that helps us fund the $3,200 continually for performance pay. But also we'll have $10 million to make a decision on related to our approximately 2,500 certified staff who can access classroom site fund this next year. Some of the new expenditures then that we took since we had increases to our budget and we had already reduced our, some of our expenditures to align our staffing compared to the number of students in our schools, we were able to add 20 new teachers in areas where we needed staff. For example, we are opening a new school. And we were continuing to opening our online program and expanding that. Not compared to last year, but compared to pre-COVID. Compensation increase, we gave approximately a 2.5% increase for compensation. Insurance, retirement increase, that was almost $1 million between health insurance and the state retirement increase that we cover. Second year startup costs, as we add more students to our gifted program at WGA. And then as we open our new high school for ACP area, there are startup costs at that program. Retention pay, that's one area that we are able to do is to cover retention pay. Some of that will come when we maybe transfer some of our capital over into our maintenance and operations to cover some of that. Some of it will come from our carryover. But that's where we will be able to, be able to pay out $1,000 to each of our staff as a retention payment to our staff that are starting next year and continue through the year. Utilities and general liability continue to go up, especially as we add square footage. Capital, hopefully helping us prepare as we roll out more technology, replace technology and prepare for future-ready schools. And then classroom site fund, we still have to determine how to spend that extra money. But that will be determined and brought back to you for an approval. This is, the spreadsheet was actually on one document that you saw last time. It's just kind of recapping it all, showing you the comparisons of the tax rate, how it has gone down. The overall total aggregated budget has gone up from $378 million to 415. Most of that is related to Prop 301. And then obviously the increase of fully restoring capital and the inflation amount and not having to take a reduction for that distance learning portion. So that's the increase you'll see there. Teacher salaries are continuing to go up, so that's a good sign. Hopefully they'll continue to go up more. Financial changes were the ones that we talked about related to all the legislative changes. We'll bring back more of some of the details that come out through gap funding, special education funding. And you're going to see a budget that you have to revise. You have to revise it before September because of the legislation getting done so late. But the requirements of having this adopted budget done by July. Just a few other changes that took place, new construction renovations as we finish all of our construction projects. There are some adjustments to that as we finish paying for our, our last high school that's being currently built and the school facility board dollars that come in from that. And then obviously the adjacent ways that we're asking for in the truth and taxation is a change. But a request to finish the high school, but also to prepare for the future because we have 6 million square feet, 1,000 acres. And we need to make sure we're, continue to maintain our facilities. The only other change is the federal side, just that it has S R 3 and it doesn't have S R 1, S R 2, and ESG. All the rest are very similar and will be revised as we bring back a revision to you. The last thing to kind of finalize is that we approved the proposed budget in June. It's the exact same budget you're approving tonight for the adopted budget. The county will finalize our tax rates information by August. We have to pay all of our bills in July and August. We get 60 days to pay off all the bills from last year. We finalize all of our federal grants by the end of September. And then we bring to you in October, the annual financial report, which summarizes everything from last year. Before you see that, you'll actually get a revision since we found that out today for this year's budget. But those are the two things you'll see before the end of September. And then we will also do another revision in December and a final revision in May. Because a lot of things are going to be changing between federal dollars, also with the Prop 301 and our teachers' input related to Prop 301. So there are some changes that you'll see. All of those decisions will come back to you as a governing board to approve over the fiscal year. All right, are there any questions for me?
Does the board have any questions or comments on the proposed budget? Mrs. Brunner?
Thanks. So it's not a big difference, but I'm just curious about the difference where I believe you said the average teacher salary is going up 3%, but in the budget it shows 2.5. Is that because we're holding on to teachers more? And so there's more experience? And that's why it's a 3% of the budget?
There is. And then also sometimes when people leave or when we add people, it just changes. So it takes all of the salaries that we projected last year and then her projection of where people will land this year and the people that we have hired on. And so it just ends up being that calculation. I think it was like 2.78, but it's rounded up to 3%.
Okay. And then just one other question. If the site fund amount is going up, is it possible that that increase could be put towards a higher performance pay than $3,200? Is that one of the options?
Absolutely. So that is equivalent pretty much to another, could be up to $3,200, another chunk. So it'll just be a one-time amount, but we'll make decisions on that and then bring it back to the governing board. It is a chunk of money.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, if there's no other questions from the board, we'll go on to the truth and taxation.
Okay, so Arizona, Madam President, Mr., members of the board, the truth and taxation hearing was published on July 1st. And it's required to be published in the newspaper. A lot of times this gets very confusing about truth and taxation because it's the only thing that the actual governing board can vote on to increase a tax. But it's required to be published in a local newspaper. So this is only one piece of the primary tax. As you recall, the primary tax was 6.07, which if you took $100,000 home, that would be equivalent to $607 over a year's worth of time. The truth and taxation notice is specifically for that $2.5 million that we've talked about in the, in the adopted budget hearing for things that are adjacent to public properties. For example, like a stoplight or a fire lane or utilities are being brought in for a new school can be used for. That's the only thing the governing board can actually increase a tax for is for adjacent ways. So $2.5 million is equivalent to $7.63. If you're equating it to $100,000 home, it would cost you $7.63. So that is part of our overall tax rate, which is equivalent to 1% of the tax that we're taxing from our school district. So our overall tax rate on $100,000 home is $607. This tax would specifically cost $100,000 home $7.63, which is 1% of it. But we are required to show that because it is taxed over one year. It's part of the overall tax. And it's the only thing that the governing board can actually approve as a tax rate. Now, one of the questions that sometimes gets confusing is it says without the tax rate increase, the total taxes that would be owed would be .31. That's only equivalent to what's called our dropout prevention. We have this dropout prevention of $107,000 that's in there every single year. That's always in there. That tax rate is .031, very tiny. So every year, whatever is the increase on top of that would be the increase that you see in the line where it says $7.63. So even though that looks like a major increase, it's just because you have to show the difference between that and the amount that you're taxing for, for adjacent ways. But again, remember, this $7.63 is a very small portion of the overall tax rate. The overall tax rate is, like I said, on $100,000 home would be $607. This is $7.63 of it. So it's about 1.26% of your entire tax.
So, Mrs. Berry, so to me, this is extremely misleading in that the tax rate for adjacent ways is less than it was last year, but this implies an increase. It's very misleading.
And this form does not allow us to even show that it's less than last year, which last year we collected $4 million. This year we'll collect 2.5. And from the examples I showed earlier, our tax rate is actually going down overall by 5%. And we believe that the dollar amount paid will go down slightly for almost majority of average homes across.
So again, for the people that came in later, what you pay in taxes will go down minimal, but they will go down next year.
Yes, on the average, yes.
That, that adjacent ways spending, it doesn't go, does it not go through the board to get approved? Or is it just spent as it's approved by the state facilities board as they, as they audit it?
So it's approved, in a sense, you approve the taxation for it. It becomes part of our budget. So in a sense, you're approving it through the taxation and through the budget process. Then any project that we have to use adjacent ways on, we have to ask the school facilities board. Now, that's changed because now the school facilities board is underneath a different department. So I'm not sure how that's going to work specifically this fiscal year as some of those things change. There's some laws that have changed on that.
They're still doing audits, so I guess.
We'll see how that works, right. So, but ultimately, the school facilities board approves that process and then we can spend it. So Mr. Fletcher has been, every project we have, he applies to the school facilities board. Even though they don't give us any dollar amounts, we have the money in our accounts, but we have to get their approval to spend the dollars at that point. Now, the governing board, every project, Mr. Fletcher brings back to you. And you approve each of those construction projects as we move forward. So you are approving them in the construction project.
So because of all that, is there a way, since the truth and taxation format directive from the state is misleading, is there a way that we could represent the larger tax picture with this statement? So we could have another statement that goes with that that gives the true bigger picture of what is going on? Or is that not possible?
Well, what we try to do is do that through our adopted budget and through the hearing presentation. So the presentation earlier, and I can pull up. I think it's helpful to show that our overall budget, and if you don't mind, I'll pull it up really quick to show that overall tax. That's, that's probably the importance of the tax, showing the overall tax rate, for example. So the adjacent ways becomes part of this overall tax rate right here. It's part of that 3.7058. And so it, overall, like we showed in the presentation, and I'm going to kind of swing down to our overall tax rate, you can see 6.07%. And that, the calculation, all of that's in there, including the truth and taxation portion. Now, is, most houses will see a slight decrease in their actual tax bill in October. But it is, we don't, we haven't had a, or we haven't, we don't have a format, except for we could produce something in the newspaper. It's the only way to show that, but.
It just seems more transparent to the community if we, if we could add a little something of the big picture for everyone to understand.
That makes sense. And there, one thing the state tried to do is they make us post our budgets on our website for people to go see. And it shows those primaries, but for most people, not a cent. I agree with you. Good point. It is super confusing. I think Mr. Wirth said it too. It's misleading when you see that piece of paper. Great point. We can think through that. Maybe there's a different process for us. Great point.
Are there any other questions? And since this is a public hearing, Mr. Wirth, is there? I guess there's not a microphone up there. I think they're bringing one out, maybe?
That one's broken.
Okay.
All right, thank you. You know, I appreciate the effort to try to bring this down to a level where individuals and taxpayers can start to understand what comes out of their pocket. I think it's a good effort. But the thing I saw is that, you know, a house that was worth $311,000 in 2008 is not the same house that's worth $311,000 in 2022.